As a preliminary matter, this is a public meeting of the zoning board of appeals and I am Howard Traister, the chairman. Tonight's public hearing is for villagers at Cricket Lane. Please permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Zoning Board members.
Here.
I just wanted to mention too, I failed to put in Volin. So it's also Ron Volin's hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Mario Carnavelli?
Mario? He froze up. Yeah, he's, he's just frozen up for a moment, so.
We'll go on and.
I'll circle back to confirm his presence.
Right, okay. Planning Board member Larry Murphy. Sorry about that. Staff, when I call your name, please respond to the affirmative. Susan Neuss. Anticipated speakers on the agenda, please respond in the affirmative. Lisa Mead, Town Council.
Yes.
Okay, good evening. Good evening. Today is Thursday, December 17th, 2020. It is 7:30 PM and this is a meeting of the zoning board of appeals which is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth through the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public parties are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted with the agenda materials for this meeting, allows public parties to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, the ZBA is convening by telephone conference, video conference via Zoom, as posted on the agenda. The zoning board of appeals section of the town's website identifying how the public may join. You may participate by going to http/zoom.us and entering meeting ID 858-9738-7467 and passcode 224283 or calling 929-2056099, entering meeting ID 858-9738-7467. If prompted, enter passcode 224283. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that all attendees are participating by video or telephone conference. Material has been provided to the ZBA members and documentation is also available to the public on the town's website. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I, Howard Traister, chairman, will introduce each item on the agenda. As I, as a participant, we ask that you keep the following in mind. Please mute when you are not speaking for a telephone. Star 60, star six to toggle mute or on mute, or computer click on and off mute button. Please use earbuds, earphones with tablets and cell phones. Please speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. Please be aware that as a video, as video participants, you are attendees in a meeting. Participants can see you and care should be taken to eliminate interruptions while you are participating on your computer. Anything that you broadcast on your video will be captured by the recording. I will yield the floor to the applicant and/or their representatives and will invite them to present their application of further information that was requested. If the applicant and/or their representative wish to share their screen, please request through the chairman so that you can be given permission to do so. I, Howard Traister, chairman, will afford ZBA members the opportunity to request to speak, ask questions at any time. Further, I will afford public comment by participants as follows. I will seek questions through the raised hand. For video conference participants, this function can be accessed by clicking on the participants option listed in the menu below the photo gallery. Hover your cursor in this area if you don't see it. Window will open and display on the right. On the bottom of this participant area, you will see the list of phone video participants and on the bottom you will view, see the ability to click on a button, raise hand. Please ensure your name is displayed. List your name, address, and your question. Telephone participants can use their phones, iPad while a Zoom meeting, well, in a Zoom meeting to raise hand by hitting star nine. I will seek to call upon questions from the public that will hit the raised hand button in order of which they are listed. System lists in order by whom hit the raised hand function. Please identify your name and address and then your question or comment. Your hand will be lowered when you have been given the floor for your questions. We will continue, continue down the list of those in the raised hand column. Should there be a physical or electronic submittal of questions or concerns that were received, they will be read for the record at this time. We will now move on to the agenda. Eric, could you please read the agenda for us?
Public hearings. Are we doing the draft, review draft decisions for Seacoast Canine?
No.
Jennifer Ford, the cottages LLC, Plum Island?
I don't believe so.
Okay, so.
Did Sue have those on the agenda?
She, she did, and so maybe make a motion that we just move that towards the end?
Yes, please.
So if we just, we'll do that. Okay, public hearings, Ron Volin, 354th Street. Continued hearing. The applicant is requesting a finding for relief from section 97-4D of the Newbury zoning bylaws as the proposed construction will increase the height, the floor area ratio, FAR, and the lot coverage of the structure located within the Plum Island overlay district, PIOD, of the formerly, of the property located on assessor's map U04-0-61.
Mario, can you hear us now?
Okay. No. Well. Can we just continue and he can watch the video for what he misses or? Town council, can you tell us what we need to do?
Um, we need to know if he can hear us and can respond.
Okay.
And on this, on this particular matter, it would have to be continued if he can't.
Okay.
Mario, can you hear us? I think we need to make sure he can communicate with us.
Yeah, yeah, he's having, yeah, I've tried calling him and texting him again, so it's audio on his side. He's unmuted here.
I see him talking, his mouth is.
Yeah, yeah.
I think he's frozen now. Mario, can you hear us?
Yeah, he's definitely having some audio and video issues. I'm gonna try calling him again.
I don't have your attendance, Mr. Chair, from the first meeting. Did he attend the first meeting? Okay.
I believe so. Sue can confirm that, but I'm sure he was there. And I assume that if he is frozen or unable to communicate, we can't continue with a second hearing either?
Well, it would be, he would be, he would be absent, so we could continue with the first hearing because then he could watch the tape and, and wave in, but you couldn't make a decision on the first hearing.
Oh, okay.
Similarly, with the next hearing.
Right. A decision tonight anyways.
Right. But as to the decisions that you need to review and approve, he needs to be present for those.
Okay.
So I just spoke with him. He's, he's going to try connecting via his smartphone now. He's having some internet issues at home.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah. He can. That's great.
Okay, great.
Mr. Chair, you can proceed now.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Volin, are you present?
Mr. Volin is present. Mr. Chairman Mark Griffin, representing Ron Volin and Leslie Albright.
Correct.
I'm here with my clients. May I, may I move forward, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
We're here with my clients, like I said, Ron Volin and Leslie Albright, and also with their architects, Sally Dugan and Hector Rodriguez. They're all on this call. And so first, I'd just like to get into the existing conditions on this property. We're, as you know, we're here for a finding for 354th Street for an alteration to that existing home. And so I want to run through existing conditions, so if we could get the existing condition site plan up on the screen, that would be great. Can we do that?
Who's going to present that, Mark?
Are you able to do it, Susan? If not, we'll.
I'm not gonna do it, nope. Hector Rodriguez will do it for us, if you can allow him to share his screen.
You should be able to do that now.
So as you can see, that's the existing condition site plan. The property itself is located in the residential agricultural zoning district and it's also, as you know, in the PIOD. The lot is legally non-conforming with 7,200 square feet of lot area. It has a pre-existing legally non-conforming two-story structure on it. The property is pre-existing legally non-conforming with respect to frontage. It's got 90 feet of frontage where 125 is required. And the home is also non-conforming regarding its rear setback. So it's got five and a half feet where 10 feet setback is required. The existing home's a two-story wood frame, single-sided, two-bedroom home with a covered deck. The home is set pretty far back from the street. It's got about a 42-foot front setback. And it's unique for Plum Island in that it's not located in a flood hazard zone. It's in, it's in zone X. So there's also a wooden shed on the lot located on the property and a gravel driveway right off of 54th Street, which has sufficient area to accommodate two cars parked there. So I just want to go through a little bit of the, this application is pending for quite a while and so I want to go through a little bit of what occurred previously. So if we could go to the original plans that were filed with the ZBA, that would be great. So this is the proposed site plan. And as you can see, the original proposal was basically to make sort of a small breezeway type connection and then build an addition that flares out from the end of that breezeway connection to construct a master suite, you know, with bedroom closets. And, you know, that was the, the idea. Let's go to the elevations. And the next. Sorry, back. Yeah, that's fine. So you can see how it's sort of elongated and has that sort of long connection and that the addition is sort of separated from the main house. And so this was heard in June, July, and August by the ZBA. And the main concerns during those times were that this addition would be turned into an additional dwelling unit. And that there might actually be an accessory apartment there where an accessory apartment is not allowed. While we did not, the Volins, Volin and Albright did not propose any additional units. Nonetheless, that was the apprehension of the ZBA. To the point where the ZBA actually contacted town council to determine whether or not that was a proper ground for denying the application. At the August hearing, I believe, it was determined that that really wasn't a proper ground for a prospective denial on something that somebody might do. But nonetheless, my clients have decided, decided at that point that they knew the ZBA didn't like this plan. And so what they wanted to do was bring back a plan that was better and one that was more suited to what they thought the ZBA would want to see. And so we move forward and my clients retained spacecraft architects, Sally Dugan and Hector Rodriguez here tonight. They, you know, got together and basically put together a drastically changed plan. One that is much more seamlessly connected to the existing home. You can see in this site plan that sort of skinny breezeway idea is gone. And then, you know, if we go to the elevations, please. Thank you. So you can see how it's a much more seamless integration of the addition to the existing home. And so, you know, at this point, we're into what constitutes the proposal. And I'll turn it over to the architects just to go through what the idea was here and, you know, how it's going to be constructed. Thank you.
All right, thank you. My name is Sally Dugan and nice to meet you all. When we first were introduced to this, we too felt that the, the addition they were proposing was sort of a rather large box that didn't really speak to the character of the existing home. So the first thing we did was to break up the mass of that volume. And we took our cues from the existing structure. So the existing gable ends are 12, 6 or so wide and ours are each 12 foot wide. And now just a single story. The breezeway connector looks more in scale with the addition now because the addition is much more modest. So it still houses a bedroom and sitting area and a bathroom and closet. Some of the things we did as well to we, if you could go back to the site plan, Hector. The rear porch, we removed the rear porch and the wooden deck that was out there and we installed just a very modest landing out of the rear egress. So that is no more than the 5.5 foot setback that was existing. Our addition now sits 8.1 feet back from the rear property line. And you can see here as well, it's easy to see diagrammatically that the mass of that addition has been broken up into pieces that are more in keeping with the existing house. All the materials, same trim package, same siding. Windows we scaled to be similar to the existing home. We also removed some of the front porch. The original front porch had a little Z, little extra piece to it. We removed that. And we just have one set of stairs now entering onto that front porch. So maybe you could go back to the elevation sector. So you can see from each side, even if we looked at the other two sides, that now this home is, you know, small forms that are similar to what was there in the original cottage. I think Hector also has a 3D rendering that he can leave us on and that, I'll leave you with that. And any questions that anyone has, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you, Sally. If the board has questions right now, that's fine. Otherwise, I'm just gonna proceed and conclude if that's all right, Mr. Chairman.
I think you ought to proceed and conclude, Mark, and then we can talk about the whole project.
So the addition's about 523 square feet. And, you know, it's gonna extend out, as you heard, from the westerly side of the home along the non-conforming rear setback. However, the, the extension, as was just noted, is farther back from the lot line than the existing non-conforming setback. So we're going from 5.5 to 8.1 feet in the rear. There's, the rest of the proposal does not create any new non-conformities and every dimensional impact is within the PIOD dimensional requirements, as you can see on the revised application that was submitted. So the use since is proposed, that's proposed is the, the same one that exists, the single-family residential occupancy. It's permitted by right in this district and in the PIOD. The footprint has changed and the rear setback is extended. So these two things require a finding from the zoning board of appeals. And as you all know, the criteria for that is that this proposal not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood or the P I, and the PIOD than what exists. And we would submit that this particular addition, as you're looking at it, fits in with what exists. It's going to be aesthetically pleasing and will also complement other homes in the neighborhood of similar design and structure. It's not overbuilt for the lot, nor is it overbuilt for the neighborhood. And so based upon all of that, we would submit that it's not substantially more detrimental. And in fact, it's going to be an improvement and respectfully request that the ZBA grant this application for a finding. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Eric, do you have any comments on the changes?
Well, I appreciate the, the nice drawings, the proper professional drawings that were done. The new layout and the rendering. So I think I had a few issues, but one of them was resolved in the discussion. So the FAR appears to check out, the lot coverage checks out. Would agree with the side yard, the existing yard setbacks of the front yard is existing to remain. The one side yard is improved. The rear yard is existing to remain and the B side yard or the left side yard is looking at the plan is decreased, but it's still more than the 10 feet that is required. One thing that's not on the plans, although it does check out, is the, you know, actual height as measured by the ZBA to the midpoint of the ridge, from the midpoint of the, of the roof line. It's measured to the, to the ridge and even measuring it to the ridge to grade is, is 23 feet. So it's well within keeping of the height. My one concern that I noticed in the plan before you mentioned it and wanted to just make sure that it was, it was as appears on the site plan is the removal of the patio in the corner to actually have the, the rear setback be 5.5 and the side setback be 2.8. And then the existing plans also showed about a, you know, 12 by 12 shed. Is that remaining or is that something that is also being removed on the property?
That's being removed.
Thank you. So the site plan from existing to new appears to be in keeping exactly what was presented with the floor plans and elevations presented. And two bedrooms to three bedrooms. So I don't have any more comments, Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Eric. Mario, would you have any comments at this time?
No comments from me, no. I agree with Eric's review.
Okay, thank you. So do we have any raised hands from the public? Sue, can you hear me?
Yeah, could Hector stop sharing his screen so I can make sure I catch everybody if they're raising a hand?
Okay.
Thank you very much. It does not appear that we have anybody with questions that's participating.
Okay, in that case, would anybody like to make a motion on this application?
This was chairman only motion. I propose to grant a motion to grant the applicant a finding for relief from section 97-4D on the basis that the application as presented is not aimed by the board to be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming structure to the area and will be, and will have some improvements in that it meets the PIOD requirements and does not exacerbate any existing non-conformities.
Okay, we have a second for this motion?
Second that motion.
Okay. Eric, do you vote in favor?
Yes.
Mario?
Yes.
Okay, and I vote yes. The motion, motion passes.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're fucking kidding me.
So who do we have on here?
Um. I'm just trying to find. Mario, still here?
Yep, still here.
All right. We're good to go.
We hope so. Okay, Eric, you want to continue with the agenda?
Public Gearing's Cricket Lane LLC fifty-five R Pearson Drive. The applicant is requesting a comprehensive permit under general law, chapter forty B. Section twenty dash twenty-three to construct. The villages at Cricket Lane. For twenty-four, twenty-four, single family detached home ownership units on accessories map are twenty dash zero dash seventy-five. Discussion outstanding, discuss outstanding questions slash concerns on civil engineering. Joe Sowaka and Wetlands with Ann Martin from L E C.
Okay. Is the applicant present?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Attorney Douglas DeShane, representing Cricket Lane Development. With me this evening, Walter Erickson, management manager of Cricket Lane Development, as well as Ben Osgood from Ranger Engineering. Good evening.
So we decided at the last meeting that we would review civil engineering and wetlands. So I'd like to start with civil engineering. With Joe Sowaka is here.
It doesn't look like he's here, although he was supposed to, but I can tell you that he was satisfied. That he and the applicant had worked out all the details from a civil engineering perspective. But wanted a final plan set to go through and verify that. I think based on that statement, Ann Martin can pick up and talk about some of the items that. Are being discussed from a wetlands perspective that are still causing some plans that updates.
You looking for Joseph Walker?
Is he here?
Yes. This is Joey. Sorry.
All right, where are you?
I can see myself on the screen.
I can see you.
All right, I'm just blind, I guess. Hold on, give me a moment. So wave again so Susan can see you. Oh, there you are. Okay, sorry, I didn't mean to step in like that, so you can take it away.
Yes. If you let me to proceed, I did review the drainage for Cricket Lane. For stormwater compliance to the policy and. The entire project. Drains to about four, or large basins, two above ground, three above ground, one large system underground. And based on a few reviews, at this point, they appear to comply with the stormwater policy as dictated.
Okay, and so before. We found you, Sue was giving us a review of. That you thought that the applicant had complied to all your questions?
Yes, we've been through about three iterations and they took care of numerous issues and at this point it appears. At least all my comments have been addressed.
Okay, so you'd like to review a final plan? Or?
Yes, I think there were some last minute changes, some additions, details. I'd like to see it all together in one set of final plans.
Okay, thank you. Eric, do you have any questions from Mr. Sowaka?
No, I have no questions at this time.
Mario, any questions?
No questions.
Okay, and the applicant, would you like to make any comments on? Mr. Sowaka's comments?
I know, Mr. Chairman, we would like to thank him though for his, his work and reviewing things. I know we have had a little push this past week and we do appreciate his efforts in getting through that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we'll move on to environmental issues or concerns, so. With Ann Martin here, we'd like to hear from you.
Okay. Past couple of weeks has been a push. Ben and I have been. Working hard along with Norris Environmental. Reviewing the plans, basically reviewing responses to my comments. From October ninth that were discussed at the October twenty-second meeting. We went through several rounds of plans and written documentation. I will not bore you with all the details, but I did prepare. A one-page memo with all of the correspondence and documentation attached to it. So that it's in the public record and so if any of the board members want to see what that was, they can. The short of it is, is most of it centered around. The wetland restoration and replication work, plant quantities, notes. Planting notes, performance specifications. I had raised some concerns about the proximity of Stormwater Basin's P one dash two and P three dash two. They looked at that and any ability to pull it back. And then they ended up proposing some tree plantings and shrub plantings. Along the perimeter of the buffer zone, we went through a couple of rounds with that. And some cleanup on the site plans and some of the reports related to. The amount of impacts and the amount of mitigation to make sure that all the numbers. Cross-checked between the plans and Norris's reports. As I said, that's all in a memo to you as of today. There was a PDF sent out with today's date of a final set of plans. It is, the revision dates on it don't correspond to today, but I don't want to speak for Ben, but Ben's response to me was that. Once all the comments were in, he would prepare, issue a final set with a final plan date that were stamped and signed by him. That I guess will be the plans that will be distributed to Joe and I for one last final. Cross-check and review to make sure it's all there, but as of. Earlier today, I believe that they have satisfied all of my comments and concerns. So all that remains is that last review and then I have some. Will provide the, the board with some recommended conditions to go with issuance of the comprehensive permit. So that completes my review.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you have any questions for Ann? Okay, Mario, any, any comments?
No.
Okay. Mr. DeShane's, any response?
Yeah, no, Mr. Chairman, other than to thank Ms. Martin, I do know that it has been a whirlwind the last two weeks and. We do appreciate her time and effort. We have attempted to. Resolve and answer any questions that were asked of us and I, and again, based on the testimony here tonight, I think we're there. Obviously, we are prepared to provide that final stamped, correctly dated. Plan so that everyone can, you know, review it one last time and see that everything was done correctly, but I believe. We have come to a point where we, where we have achieved that, with the exception of getting that, you know, that final, final plan to everyone.
Okay, thank you. So those were the two main things we wanted to talk about tonight. Erica, when I ask you. We received some correspondence as far as. Design and landscape that. Were intended to answer some of the questions you raised at the last meeting, if you have a chance to look at those.
I'm just, just opening the email for the first time right now.
Right, I only opened it today, so we, we won't even talk, discuss that tonight then. Is there anything else you'd like to talk about tonight, Eric?
I'd just like to understand the timing of the final plans and the final review. As part of our, you know, discussion of landscape and additional information that's been provided today.
Okay, so Mr. DeShane's, can you answer that, any of that?
Yeah, yes, Mr. Chairman, if I could, Mr. Osgood, could you? Could you provide us an understanding of when you expect to have the final stamp plan circulated to Mr. Swakar and Ms. Martin?
We can finalize them and date them now. As, it's just, it's hard to put a revision date. When we're doing multiple revisions, I think I've sent out. Three or four sets of plans in the last week. So we just, we work through the issues. There's discussions back and forth, we may have differences that we discuss. And until we kind of work everything out, we just. We don't keep revising the plan and issuing a new revised date. Sometimes I submitted just a sheet or two to Ann just to. Say, okay, here's a, here's a revision, so at this point, if Ann is fine with everything, Joe is fine with everything. We can issue a final set, we'll stamp it, we'll send hard copies over to the zoning board so that they're, you know, available for review at the town hall. You know, and, and I think one of the next steps is. Submit it to the Conservation Commission once the plans have been finalized here. And everybody gives the sign off here, so that would happen. The, the final plans can be stamped tomorrow and probably. Submitted earlier next week.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, go right ahead, Eric.
So can we have a chance to review the landscape plan and understand it? I believe, Ann, you said. Did you receive a copy of a completed landscape plan overlay with the civil drawings?
I received a plan that showed, sheet sixteen shows the wetland replication restoration work. And one of the sheets shows plantings along the limit of work. Down gradient of two of the stormwater basins. But I did not, I don't believe the plan sets that I saw included a landscape plan, but. Ben, correct me if I'm wrong.
No, no, Mr. Chairman, the landscape plan was never submitted to Ann Martin because the landscape plan was just for the individual houses and along the street.
Okay. So. Does that answer your question, Eric?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we have, you know, a chance to review or discuss before things are either finalized and sent along and then. For some reason, somebody's asked to redo something and as Ben just said, he's been making multiple copies and revisions and. You know, I don't want to waste any paper by stamping it just before we're ready, so I'm just asking about the procedures, the process and schedule here.
Okay. Mario, any comments from you?
No, I think.
No.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
No, I just think we'll wait till the final, final and then review that and see if we have any additional comments.
You fucking waste of shit.
So is there anything we can do about that?
I'm not catching any green of who's speaking. Did somebody have a question in the audience?
I think it's the. The block that says S D P D B.
I would concur with that.
Mr. Richardson.
Okay.
Is that someone that? Has a legitimate question, you know, Sue?
They're not, I, I don't, I only see letters, I, nobody responded when I asked if anybody had any questions, so. Unless you want to put it out to the audience again and perhaps someone might speak.
Well, I just want to make sure, I guess if Eric has no more questions for tonight and Mario doesn't. We will ask for public comment at this point.
More comments, Mr. Chairman?
No comments.
All right, okay, so see, see if we have any raised hands.
We have Brad Smith.
Okay.
Go ahead, Brad.
But actually, this is Laura Smith. We live at six Pearson Drive and I just have been tempted to speak up, but I just need several things that I want to get off and, and discuss with the zoning board. The first thing I want to say and actually have like four or five questions. The first thing I want to say, I want to put on the record that conducting a meeting via Zoom for many of the residents. Of Pearson Drive is very, very uncomfortable and it actually is a poor representation of what we all believe to be. The worst decision to try to put a cul-de-sac on the end of a cul-de-sac. I just think that Zoom is wrong at this point to try to listen to what we have to say. So please, that, put that on record. Let's start there. Okay? My first question of the zoning board is, I, I just need to understand, yes or no, does the zoning board understand? That the residents of Pearson Drive are not really opposed to forty B. Any development in Newbury, but we really are absolutely opposed to the idea of building a cul-de-sac at the end of a cul-de-sac. And, you know, the benefit is going to be six low-income houses, really, why? That's my first question.
Okay, so to answer that question is, we've heard all of the comments that people have. Given us and we take everything into consideration.
Do you understand that we are not opposed of the forty B development?
Well, I understand your saying.
So if I got a petition with everybody's answer, would that make it so that you would understand that we all don't oppose the forty B? But we oppose the cul-de-sac on the end of a cul-de-sac?
I guess it would, but we're not questioning. Whether forty B is a good idea or not, we're looking at a specific plan. So you're more than welcome to send us any information that you want.
Would it be helpful to do a petition that would explain that we really don't oppose the forty B? And that really, you know, going on with all the developments and the plans is really. Should be void if the whole idea of a cul-de-sac on the end of a cul-de-sac shouldn't even happen.
Well. We have to consider. The plans that are sent to us, not just one opinion or opinions of the public, that's all part of the process. So you're welcome to, to provide that to us.
Okay.
We will look at it.
Okay, good, then that will be one of my first plans, okay? The, the second question I have is that I happened to have been at the Newbury Planning Board meeting. That really determined that this lot was not buildable and that they were not going to include it in the search for the low-income housing. They showed us a map of eight different lots or whatever and they absolutely said this one was not buildable. Why are we changing that this now is buildable?
I guess maybe someone else can answer better than I, but I believe it's because mass housing. Has approved them to come before us.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead, Eric. Yep.
Not having seen the town planning. Presentation, but it would be good for the Z B A to get a hold of that. And we think that previously it was somewhat stated that the, the lot as accessed from. The frontage. of the lot was, was not, was the issue. The fact that a different access point has been provided may make this property or it does make this property developable or makes part of this property developable.
So it'd be worth.
Larry, can we weigh in on this? Larry, can you speak on this at all?
You're muted, Larry.
Recap the question again, please.
So you want me to?
Yeah, why don't you do that?
Okay. The question is that I was actually at the Newbury Planning Board meeting that said that the, this lot was not buildable, that it was the wetlands, it just, the whole lot was not buildable, that we've addressed it years ago. We readdressed it again and they were, the planning board straight out said straight out to me because I asked them, this is not a buildable land. And they said, no, we do not believe that it was. And that it should not be included in this search for a low income housing. So my question to you, Mr. Murphy, is that's what was said at the planning board. Why are we addressing this again?
Well, I, I'm not sure what planning board meeting you're referring to, but I'll say this as a if it were based on a conventional subdivision plan, I would agree. This is certainly not an ideal location and it's a very problem location.
So wait a minute, you said based on a conventional?
Wait a minute, hold on, please. Let me finish. Okay. What, what you need to understand is this is the 40B application. All right. It goes before, it goes before the ZBA and, and as the approving authority. But frankly, and I don't want to step on town council's toes, so please jump in, Lisa. But the ZBA's authority here is somewhat limited by state statute. It's mass housing has said that this is a suitable site for 40B. I wouldn't be one I'd, I would have picked, but there it is. You know, so the, the, the whole idea of the 40B is that, that local local discretion is somewhat limited, local authority.
Yeah, I'll just confirm that, Mr. Chair, if I might. So it may be that what Ms. Smith is talking about is the plan production discussion that the planning board has had in the past where they identified certain sites around town that would be suitable for potentially low and moderate income housing developments to help the town reach subsidized housing inventory numbers. That's different. That's a town plan. That doesn't mean that the town can refuse a developer who wants to come in and do a comprehensive permit pursuant to chapter 40B on a piece of land and seek waivers from the underlying zoning. And once they have a site eligibility letter from mass housing, then the zoning board has to go through the process.
Thank you. Does that answer your question?
Well, I understand that it is a process, but again, it's, a lot has changed since it was, you know, stated that it was not a buildable land in May of 2018. It, you know, it still is not buildable land. No matter who's going to live on it. In our opinion.
Okay.
So the third question that, and, and the state statute that I want to, I want, I'll go back. I have another question that were, that I'd like to ask about that. But let me ask the next one. Did the illegal landfill of the wetlands on 57 Pearson Drive impact this, this development being able to proceed?
Maybe town council could answer that. I'm not sure, Lisa, if you.
Yeah, I, I'm not, I'm not familiar with what Ms. Smith is referring to, the illegal filling of wetlands. I'm not familiar with that.
I believe I'm familiar with what she's talking about.
Okay, go right ahead, Anne.
I have a quick question for Ben. Ben is 57 Pearson. The lot where the historic fill occurred that we have discussed.
I believe it is.
Project, okay. So to answer your question, there was work performed to identify based on aerial interpretation and soils evaluation, the field, the footprint of the historic fill. That footprint of historic fill has been calculated and the applicant has been required to provide wetland mitigation to compensate for the full footprint of that historic fill, both within the footprint of their proposed road and the historic footprint of fill beyond the footprint of their road. They have provided wetland mitigation to compensate for that historic fill.
Does that answer your question, Ms. Smith?
As long as we were acknowledging that that had happened and that we were, that wasn't making it happen, making the development still go on, even though we know that that was illegal landfill. Okay, so.
In my opinion, it did not do anything to benefit or advance the project for the applicant.
Okay, that is the answer. Thank you so much. My next question, again to the zoning board. Do you have any recommendations of how the residents of Pearson Drive can continue to contact anyone that may be governing your decision or impacting you? Like we just mentioned, the state statute, is there you know, anybody on that level that we could directly contact to tell them that really a cul-de-sac on the end of a cul-de-sac is absolutely ridiculous?
Okay, I, I think it would be mass housing that you would have to address. Town Council, would you agree?
Um, it, it is the, however, the comprehensive permit is a local permit. Once a site eligibility letter is issued. So, and there are very specific requirements related to it. But if you have other questions, you certainly can talk to mass housing.
Is there a particular person that is covering this cricket problem?
I have no idea. I'm sorry.
No person, is any person?
In the file, you can, I'm sure that if you go to the file that Susan has posted, the site eligibility letter has a signature on it.
Okay. Would you recommend, as I mentioned before, petitions on the street, any letters to any place? Any legal counsel? What should we do to continue to support that the cul-de-sac on the end of a cul-de-sac again is ridiculous?
Well, just in general, the zoning board is the, the
Pardon me?
The zoning board is either going to vote in favor or against. So you can address anything written that you would like to the zoning board and it will be considered and it will be part of the public record.
Okay, but there isn't anybody or any way that you would recommend that would be helpful? Would legal counsel be helpful? Would petitions be helpful? What would, would anything be helpful to make you understand how this is going to impact us?
Any information that we receive, we consider.
Would be what?
Any information that we receive, we consider.
Oh, okay.
What's, what is sent to us.
Okay, well, then we need to get on getting some more written information to everybody. So that we can all make sure that we're all on the same page. So, okay, let me see, let's see. Oh. So the, I guess I should say, so finally, what I'm hoping to do is to, as I've said from the beginning, that this is really, really difficult for many people to try to the residents to try to, you know, present how they feel via Zoom meetings. Is there any way that meetings can be deferred till we can meet face to face and be able to voice a positive representation? Since this is going to impact so many people on the street. You know, now we're seeing all the UPS trucks going down the street, all the, the snow. It's just how this impacts us is so important. Is there any way that we can defer meetings so that we can meet face to face and be able to speak up?
I'm going to ask town council will address the laws of the Commonwealth.
Sure. So Ms. Smith, at the beginning of COVID, this, this particular application was delayed pursuant to special legislation, chapter 53 of the Acts of 2020, which allowed certain permits to be delayed and hearings to be delayed, but also to allow and encourage boards and commissions to meet just as we are this evening. However, in the beginning of December, another special act was passed that actually required permit matters to be continued in this format and to start taking them up in a regular basis under this format. So there was a break in, in fact, this, this application was delayed for some time. But started up again before December and then all permits and their regular hearing processes are now required to proceed as the statutes require in consideration of the delay that took place.
Even though it may be quite, quite, quite possible that you're really not getting an accurate representation of the residents of Pearson Drive? As I know that there's some that can't even get on, really?
This is where we are right now and this format follows the guidance set out by the special act, the executive orders, as well as guidance from the Division of Open Government of the Attorney General's Office.
Okay, so Ms. Smith, I'm just going to reiterate. If somebody cannot participate by Zoom and they would like to voice their opinion, they can write us a letter and we will read it and it'll all be considered in our decision when we get to that point.
And they can also call in, Mr. Tracer, if I might. They can also call in. You've, you've noticed the, the telephone number as well. So you can also.
Yep, I'll pass out a letter and, and make sure I can reach those that are unable to voice their opinions on, on everything here. So.
Just like to add that I think everybody involved would rather be meeting in person than on Zoom.
Yes.
But we have to.
We appreciate that.
Deal with the situation the best we can.
Right, but some things doesn't have to be done right now. Period. You know, I mean, it doesn't have to be done right now.
I, can I ask town council to tell you that it needs to be done? We have a certain length of time to, once the application is filed, to make a decision. So town council, can you?
I'm going to reiterate that. The chapter 53 of the Acts of 2020 allowed a delay in that. However, that was amended and I don't have the citation off the top of my head at the end of November, effective December, December 3rd, that those delays are no longer appropriate.
Okay, so does that answer your question?
Yes, it answers my question. And I think that the bottom line is, and the last line I have to say, and I appreciate everyone's time, is that we are only gaining six houses that will be going towards 40B. Six. And to inconvenience 60 people, 60 houses, 60 families is, is just, is it worth it? That's my last question. Is it worth it?
Comments and questions? So do we have anybody else with a raised hand?
Dan Linden, hold on just a moment.
Thanks, Susan. This is Dan Linden, resident 68 Pearson. I just want to support Laura's statements. You know, I, I think a lot of the neighbors on the loop here feel like this is a done deal because of how 40Bs go. But from folks that I've talked to, that's not the case. So obviously the reason that, that these hearings are taking place is so that the zoning board can work with the developer on various aspects of the project. And then make a decision. But just because mass housing has said this project can go forward for consideration, doesn't mean that it's, it's an automatic, right? So last meeting I asked, for an example, the applicants claim they could easily come up with an example of a development like this being added to a cul-de-sac in Massachusetts. So I'm curious if that, if that example was able to be discovered.
We received those today, so we haven't reviewed them.
Okay, are those available on the, on the town website?
Sure, they are.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure those were cul-de-sac after, off of a cul-de-sac example. I think those were pictures of examples of the units. I'm sure Mr. DeShanes can elaborate on that.
Received an email with a listing of projects. So Mr. DeShane's, would you clarify for us?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. In fact, I did provide the board a, a listing of projects meeting Mr. Linden's request. He had asked for one. However, I did speak with Michael Busby. Mr. Busby is a relationship manager with mass housing. He has been involved in dozens and dozens of 40B projects throughout the Commonwealth. I spoke directly with Mr. Busby. I explained the question that was asked and asked and the types of project that we were looking for in terms of an example. Mr. Busby indicated to me that there were in fact dozens of projects that would, would, would fall under that type of project where we have access through an existing residential development off of cul-de-sacs, off of dead ends, projects that are not directly accessed off of a main street as Mr. Linden had suggested, all 40Bs are. And I did put that in writing. I think I gave you six or seven such projects that Mr. Busby suggested would, would meet the bill. I did actually send that in a letter form to the board earlier this week. It was not sent today. It was sent, I believe, Monday or Tuesday. I, I had, I had to wait for Mr. Busby to get back to me. So Mr. Linden can certainly look at that and his examples are there.
Okay, thank you. So sure, that'll, you'll get that on the website?
It, it may already be there. I'm just checking now. There was a lot of material that was sent over this week, so.
So, Mr. Linden, there is some information that is either on the website or going to be on the website soon regarding your question.
Okay. Thanks for that. So I, you know, just to, to further clarify some of this discussion about the planning board discussions regarding whether the site was buildable and whatnot. You know, I think the problem is that the planning board needed to come up with a plan that had affordable housing built in the town that would then squash any 40B proposal because we had a plan in place to get over that, that 10% mark. That never happened. So there, there, there were drafts, there were discussions. And yes, this site was not identified as a, as a viable site. But the planning board didn't get its stuff done, right? And so now the residents of Pearson Drive are paying for it. That's pretty frustrating as a resident that, that these discussions are happening at the town level. And yet it doesn't seem like there's enough overlap between committees or I, I don't, I'm not sure what the problem is here.
That we, we can only consider the application and comments. We cannot, you know, question whether the planning board did their job or not. That's not in our realm.
No, that's, that's fair. That's fair.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. There was, some time ago, there was a development, large development proposed, a Little River development off of Route One in the corner of Hanover. And in that development, part of the development, I believe there was proposed to be some 40B housing along with some other conditions to make that housing favorable. And that was rejected by the town. And so there, you know, there were attempts for other developments and other locations that might have added to the percentages of, of housing in the town in the past. So you might look at that and see what, what was done there and what was done. That's just a response to say that the planning board, you know, to say that the planning board didn't do their job. I mean.
I'm sorry, Eric, I didn't mean to suggest that. I appreciate the efforts of all, all folks that are involved in local politics for sure. That, that's not really what I meant. I think what I meant was that. That that's not really what I meant. I think what I meant was that the timing was such that this first project got squashed because of, you know, legal reasons that are beyond the scope of the project, really. But the folks in, on Pearson Drive thought we were done, but we really weren't done, right? So the town needed to come up with a plan for housing. And if that doesn't happen, then obviously forty B projects are allowed to occur. And and the whole point is to incentivize towns to make affordable housing. Like Laura said, I I am, count me as a person that believes in that. I understand why that exists, and I appreciate that. I think the frustration is when you have a small town like Newbury to impact the residents in a neighborhood like this for the gain of six houses when we need to gain, I I don't know what it is, almost two hundred to get to that ten percent. This is a project that has a large impact on residents of this town with little gain for the town. So those are are certainly parts of the considerations for the zoning board. I understand that that this has been documented in multiple letters, and folks are, you know, raising these concerns every meeting, and it's, it's, I'm sure, hearing it over and over again is not very fun for the zoning board or anyone else involved. But I think as a resident, it's frustrating when we talk about details that that really don't seem to matter in terms of the bigger picture. Thanks.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to actually set the record straight also on behalf of the town and the planning board. The mere adoption of a planned production, which is what is being referred to, does not give the town the ability to refuse to listen to comprehensive permit applications. You're actually required to create a certain number of units every year in order for the town to be able to use that as a tool to help accept certain forty B applications or affordable housing developments over others. So it's not the mere adoption of the plan, it's also the creation of the housing pursuant to the plan.
Okay, thank you.
And just to respond, Mr. Linden, that information is available on the website. If you look under the Village Cricket Lane section of zoning, the first item listed under the Village Cricket Lane Response Letters talks about similar projects. You should be able to find the information there.
Thank you.
Yep.
So do we have anybody else?
Nope.
Okay.
Mr. God, Mr. Godzic. Steven Godzic, I think, is his name.
Yeah, I'm trying to get him to unmute. There we go.
All right. All right, thank you. This, this will be very quick. I've stated my opposition to this horrible times. And just because you can find someone else that did it doesn't really impress me that much because a lot of people make mistakes. The only thing I'm concerned about now is if this plan gets approval, just because it's technically legal by margins, then every neighborhood in the town of Newbury is on notice that they could be moved in on. And they could shield of the forty B, and it's, it's just, it's crazy to think that they, you could go wherever you want. And if you could squeeze it in and make it technically legal, then you can affect a neighborhood and affect a town. Is this what Newbury wants? I'm not sure. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I might make a few statements for the record, please?
Right.
I, I just wanted to, again, for the record, provide the board just a quick overview of what, in fact, we have submitted in response to your various questions and and questions of some of the butters. As I just mentioned, we did provide the listing of the similar projects, which I obtained through Mass Housing. My own, my client also provided, and although it was just, you know, today, or first thing this morning, or my client did provide pictures of a home he had built in Groton. We discussed this home at the last meeting, and we offered to provide anyone that wanted to see it a tour. But we did provide pictures of that home, which is of the exact same design of the homes that we are proposing here at Cricket Lane. He had also done, recently done some landscaping on that home, although I, I'm sure the board can appreciate that it's given that it was just planted in the last couple of weeks, it's immature and but it is an example of how these homes are landscaped. We also provided you pictures of another project that Mr. Erickson had built some years ago, where the houses are in the same close proximity to each other as we are proposing here. Those pictures also show what the landscape looks as it matures. The landscape shown on those homes is, is, you know, similar to what's shown in the Groton House two years later. So you can see what it looks like when it is matured. Lastly, we did provide, as was requested of us, an overview of the entire project with the street and and landscaping shown so that you could get a view of what it all looked like on one page. I have, and I do apologize that some of this stuff was just recently submitted. But as we all, as anyone knows that works in this business, right now it is very difficult to get engineering, landscaping, design, that kind of work done in a, in a very short period. So we did do our best we could and were able to get it to you. That said, Mr. Chairman, my client through counsel and and his eight various agents has provided all of the information to this board that's been, that is required under the law. In fact, I think we have exceeded that requirement in in many instances. We have provided comprehensive information that was requested. We've provided answers to all of the questions that you've asked us. Lastly, all of your peer reviewers have completed their reviews, and they have said that we have answered all of their questions. We have addressed all of their concerns. I do know that Mr. Swatka and Ms. Martin would like to see a final plan, but the purpose of that final review is to make sure that all of the changes and and things that they asked for that we have given to them are just shown on a final plan with a final stamp and a final date. And we are going to do that. You'll have it the first of of the week. That all said, Mr. Chairman, I would respectfully suggest that it's time that we begin talking about the waivers and perhaps a draft decision or conditions at at the next meeting.
Okay, we certainly can consider doing that. Eric, do you feel that's appropriate at this time?
I do not, at this point, have any more questions to the applicant. I do, in terms of the information provided, in terms of, we have not discussed any conditions that we would think that would need to be mattered that have not been discussed. So we haven't, we haven't had that discussion yet. We just received the landscape plan overlay, so I don't know if we have any comments on that.
With respect to that, sir, if if you have comments or would like further changes to that plan, we could certainly discuss those and and get those done in, during the process of discussing conditions because those kinds of final, you know, cleanup items are not unusual to be seen in as a condition.
Mr. Chair, might I, might I suggest that, given that the engineer and the and the wetland scientists have to confer with the plans, given that the board just got the landscaping plan and needs to review that, that at the next meeting, we do review the waivers to make sure that the applicant and the board understand what the waivers were requested, and then, and then look at the, you know, any questions that might be as a result of the material that's being presented. And then based upon that, move on to the next meeting and start to talk about conditions. So I, you know, I think that, I don't know what your first meeting in January looks like, or, you know, the first or second Thursday in January, but maybe we could look at that to get started on reviewing the waivers and the materials to confirm that everything's been provided as requested.
Okay, I appreciate your, your input. So we should probably decide on the next meeting date and plan on reviewing and talking about conditions. So what do we have available?
Well, I know your regularly scheduled meeting is the twenty-first of January. It's normally when you hold it, which would be the third Thursday of the month, which I know Mr. DeShanes has also submitted another application that he's waiting on a firm date for a hearing to take place. It's really up to the board whether you want to do something either on the seventh, which would be the first Thursday, or the fourteenth, which would be the second Thursday.
I'm, I'm not available on the fourteenth, so it would either have to be the seventh or the twenty-first.
Okay.
So at this point, we, we may have another hearing, is what you're saying, Sue, on the twenty-first?
Yes.
But that's not confirmed?
We have the, received the application, and in fact, it came in from Mr. DeShane. So I didn't want to commit to a date because we hadn't talked about it specifically yet.
Right, so.
I don't know, I'm just not sure that the seventh would give you enough time, given the holidays, but.
That's what I'm thinking. I'm thinking the twenty-first is better. I guess we can do both.
Right. Yeah, I, I can, I can definitely, I, you know, I may even start some, an outline of, I've been keeping track of conditions that the board has, you know, kind of set out loud and promises have been made during the hearing process so far. So I can start to list those out in addition to the discussion related to the waivers, if that pleases the board.
That would probably be very helpful. I, I would suggest that we meet on the twenty-first to continue this hearing. Eric, is that?
I'm available the twenty-first.
Okay, Mario?
I'm available also.
Okay, so why don't we continue to the twenty-first? Is that good for the applicant?
Well, Mr. Chairman, we'd like to meet as soon as possible, but if the twenty-first is convenient for Town Council as well as the board, we look forward to that day.
Okay, so we have a motion to continue the hearing laying to the twenty-first of January.
At seven thirty.
At seven thirty, thank you.
I'll make a motion to continue the hearing to January. Sorry, I'm writing down. To January twenty-first at seven thirty.
Second?
Second that motion.
Eric?
Yes.
Mario?
Yes.
And I go, yes, the motion passes, so we will continue to the twenty-first of January at seven thirty PM.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening.
Thank you for everything. We'll see you in January.
Thank you.
Okay.
So do you want to start with the draft decisions, Eric, for Seacoast Canine and for the cottages?
Well, if we could start, Mr. Chairman, with the cottages.
Okay.
Just like to make sure that with the with the motion that's written up, that the, that the set of plans that we're agreeing to are attached to this?
Yeah, I normally attach all plans.
Right, but can, can we, can we see the plans to make sure what we're reading and what we're seeing on what is the final plan that all gets put together? Can we, can we do see that?
Right this moment? No, but not right this moment.
Okay. So.
I might be able to pull it. I mean, it's, it's probably on the website, but it's going to take a little bit to find it and put my fingers on it.
So I, I think that's, that's one point to make, is just understanding that. Second, in receiving Mr. Griffin's edits, just received them. I have not reviewed those. So I need, think we would need some time to do that. And then per the email that was also then received about conditions or other thoughts. I mean, we're making a motion, and I'd like to specifically ask on Two Old Point Road, item number seventeen says that the applicant currently proposes to demolish two buildings on Two Old Point Road to make space for outdoor seating. The proposed seating configuration containing approximately one hundred and sixty-six seats is shown on the plans and submitted with the application. Each and all of the explicitly incorporated herein and made part of this decision by reference, seating is predominantly outdoors. So, you know, with this, with the understanding that this change of plan and venue, that this, this is dictating that the two buildings be demolished. I think that's, make that point clear. And that I guess the other part is the specific language about planning board review. And just understanding that per or after planning boards review does EVA receive a copy of whatever final final site plan has been reviewed by the planning board. And I guess what I'm uncertain of the process because in reviewing the plan and the comments that I had made during the meeting, that the parking and the number of parking spaces and the parking that's the first spaces that are directly off of the road do not appear to meet the current town planning for setbacks and neck of, neck of entry or entryway onto a property. So I'm just just need to, I just need to just need to review the language that says that, so that we have some understanding of what this process is. Knowing, or at least I'm stating that I know that there's going to be changes to the site plan.
Mr. Zevon, if you, I, I think you obviously need to take the time to make sure you're satisfied with the decision. Two things that I think can help with that is we'll refer to the plan specifically, the last revised date and number of places entitled the plan specifically, we'll do that. But also, in addition, it to the paragraph that refers to the Planning Board and Conservation Commission approvals. You know, instead of that last sentence, should any of those conditions conflict with any provisions, conditions herein, the board reserves the right to amend this decision upon a duly noticed public hearing. You know, we can say that we can require the applicant to come back and get a modification and put the burden on the applicant as opposed to the board there. So you can consider that when you're reviewing the decision.
Thank you.
May I make a comment, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go right ahead, Mark.
So the, the proposed edits that I submitted to the decisions are actually very limited. They had to do with something that I had mentioned to the board prior to the hearing on the, on the application. I submitted a supplemental memorandum, which apprised the board of the fact that the auto repair building had obviously been damaged by fire, that we were showing the. Uh, that we were showing that the auto repair building would be demolished. Um, and that the plans that were submitted by the architect showed a large sand pit area. Um, however, it was the applicant's um, probable intent to rebuild. Uh, the auto repair building and not to leave that sand pit area entirely the way it was. And so that that supplemental memorandum was something I submitted uh, in November before the hearing. Um, to indicate that that, you know, that building um, would not stay demolished.
So, uh, Mr. Chair, uh, and uh, members of the board, the hearing's been closed, I believe, if I'm not incorrect. Um, and um, town council, uh, myself and Mr. Winner, who attended the last meeting. Um, believe the board should omit the comments by Mr. Griffin on the decisions. Because the uh, the what he's asking the board to do is not shown on the plans. So, um, and was not a part of uh, the decision and discussion of the board. So. Um, that that.
Definitely was part of the discussion. Absolutely well, yeah.
So.
I believe when we questioned the building, uh. I'm not sure that it was a sure thing that it was going to be demolished, that it was. Thinking it probably it would be, but uh, my recollection is that it was never stated that it was going to be demolished.
Understood, Mr. Chairman, but the plans that we attach and the plans that it get attached to the deed to show. What was approved. Don't, don't uh, conform to each other. Period.
Right. If the applicant wants to amend, file an amendment, that's different, but the plans that are presented um, don't. Do not um, coincide with what's being requested.
There, there had been an architectural plan provided, uh, there was two plans. There was one by the. Civil engineer that that still showed the building there and then subsequent to that before. Uh, there was a plan provided that that from the architect that did show the sand pit area without the. The building that was presented at the, at the last meeting.
Yeah, and I think.
Good.
Well, I think we could, you know, we could understand that and you could prove that for the record, but here again, then we then. You know, for the zoning board, we don't have plans that match the intent or tell the whole story. Um, that will be attached to, you know, what's the zoning board gonna, what's the planning board gonna review? So I I, I think there's some issues here.
That was the whole purpose for this, for the submission of the supplemental memorandum and the discussion about this building. Um, at the hearing was to let the board know. That although you were looking at a plan that showed that building gone, that it may be rebuilt. Uh, it was called out. It was very explicit and we had it back and forth on it.
I understand that, Mark. You know, if you're presenting other applications and you're going to start presenting plans that have different conflicting information on them. You know.
Well, I, I think what we're trying to accomplish here is not, not to show you what's going to get built there, just. Uh, I think the concern was that the, the, the language may kind of. Shut down the possibility of even coming back in at some future point to ask for another building to get constructed there.
We're not here to, the zoning board is not here to grant motions for. Temporary conditions and holding. You have a unique site, you have a non-conforming site, and to keep coming back to the zoning board to keep changing it and amending it. Over time, seemingly within the rights of uh, making the application. You know, is not in the interest of the town or the neighbors for keeping a site. Um, that is non-conforming, in my opinion. So, we, you know, we'd like you to submit plans and with the intent that what you're submitting is what you actually intend to do. And not be hedging your bets nine ways to Sunday to do it. Uh, you know, I know you're in a business, I know you own a property, and I know you'd like to try to figure it out as you go, but. In terms of coming before the Z B A, you submit an application with. Uh, factual information for which we review and make a decision on. And if there are inconsistencies with what you plan to do, uh, that is represented back to the Z B A into the town. Then, you know. The, the plans, the plans have issues and the motion has issues for what the intent is.
So that would have been. Something to the effect of a notation on the plan that said. Auto repair building to be rebuilt in the future. That, that small notation i- is the difference that we're talking about right now. And instead of having that small notation on a plan, we had a conversation about it and we submitted a memorandum apprising the board. Of what our intent was going to be. What we don't want is a decision that sets forth that. You know, this restaurant can only be operated if that building is demolished and that if it's rebuilt. Then, you know, that voids the permit. That's what we don't want.
And I think you need to make an application, Mark, that is clear of your intent and single intent. And and submit those, not submit like the sunroom's over here, or it could be over there, or it could be over here tomorrow. And we would like you to approve this, that, and the other thing for, we'll make up our decisions later. And I know that's tough in terms of some projects and going before Conservation Command, Commission. Um, and when people ask us, you know, in terms of other uh, parameters and other, other boards or committees in towns. You know, we have a certain purview, and I just request respectfully that we submit one plan of action. Um, and documentation that we're intending to review. That's all.
I, I totally understand um, where you're coming from on that. Um, and. What I would just say that is that the board did vote in favor of this application. With us calling out that issue and us informing the board that it intended to be rebuilt. So, for complete miss sake, would you want to see another plan submitted and attached to the decision? That had that notation on it that we just discussed.
Well. Yes, for one of my points was, yes, I'd like to see the the documentation match. The discussion and the motion and not have something be loose or or unattached for the site plan. Secondly, the, the language of of what the um, planning board may say in terms of the proper layout. And location and then what effects that may have to changes on the plan that result in other. Other issues. That's what I'm thinking through, and I'd just like to have that clearly stated on the motion here.
We can definitely provide you with that.
Is that, you know, our intent is that in terms of the public that is saw or viewed. The um, hearing and what they intend and then to have something different or substantially different. Without a hearing, um, is something that, you know, the Z B A is not intending to do. So, I'm not in disagreement or of what you're doing and what you're trying to do. I just want to make sure that we're all clear. Uh, and the record is clear and um, you know, you're not coming back or there are changes or. You know, that you have issues later because of what you did didn't match the decision and someone calls you out on it. Not the Z B A, but someone could if it's not correct, so.
So, would our uh. How we would proceed? Do we need to have a, a new hearing, uh, town council or?
Well, if you've closed the public hearing, you can't take any more um, evidence. Um, so the board has, um, you know, the board has ninety days from the date of the closure of the public hearing to issue the decision. So, Mr. Savon can, can, you know, take these decisions back and make sure he's comfortable with them. And if he has any changes he'd like us to make, then um, we can certainly do those and have him ready for. The board's consideration on, at the January twenty first meeting.
Okay, so I think that's the best way to proceed. Uh, Eric, you can review uh. What they want to present and we can discuss it on the twenty first.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, and Mario, I'm not leaving you out of the discussion, so if you have any, any comments.
I. I recall the meeting last, the last meeting, so yes, it was a, I guess, a point of contention of what was going to happen, but though I agree. What was uh, decided on.
Okay, okay, so uh, Mr. Griffin, that's what we'll, we'll do. Uh, Eric will take a look at it and we will uh, discuss this on the twenty first.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Thank you. Thanks.
Okay, so we have one more court decision to discuss, Eric.
Other than some. Yeah, for the Seacoast Canine LLC, I really don't have any comments. I think it's. It is a representation of what um, accurate representation. Of the decision that was made and the, and the documentation. That was provided. I know there's a couple pieces of correspondence that are here that needed to be added, but um. I think it's all here and well written.
I agree. Mario, are you satisfied with the decision?
Yep.
Okay, so we can go ahead and add whatever needs to be added and uh.
Yeah, so who's going to provide that under section two submitted materials and information?
I will, I will do that.
And for the two and eight old point, um. I'll make my edits and send them to Susan. Susan will send them to town council. Right?
Yeah, we just, and we need to know, um, Brian uh, didn't have in his notes who made the motions. So we just get from the minutes who made the motion and who seconded it.
Yeah, I've got that, yeah.
Thank you.
There, so uh, is there anything else we need to discuss tonight?
Um, I, just to note that, hang on a second. We received decisions for um, Wentzall Millback. And so that those are in review and I will have those back um, to Susan by this weekend, if I have any comments. Please have them signed or I'll have comments.
Good.
Okay.
Okay.
Awesome.
All right, so if there's nothing else, uh, like to hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second that.
Okay, very good. Eric?
Second, yes.
Mario?
Yes.
And I vote yes to, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Have a safe end of the year, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you, Lisa, for your comments and counseling.
Take care.
All right, happy holidays, everybody.
Yep, same.
Same, same to you.